Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the October eighth twenty twenty four meeting of the Town Board of the town of Newcastle. The town has been an executive session and I would like to ask for a motion to open the work sessions.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going to start the evening with our third quarter financial report. Um, and we're getting that from from Dury, our town comptroller.
Hi, good evening everyone. Uh, just back again to do uh one of our quarterly financial summaries. Uh, third quarter is probably one of the better indicators of how we're actually gonna end the year. The first and second quarter, there's typically a lot of revenue sources haven't yet been received and a lot of our bills haven't yet been paid, so uh usually by the end of the third quarter, we have a good indication of how we're gonna end the year. And by all accounts right now, the information looks pretty good. What I typically do in these quarterly summaries is go through the four major funds, the general, highway, refuse and water fund. And just kind of look at how we're trending versus budget. After three quarters of the year, we should be about seventy five percent of our revenue should be in and about seventy five percent of our expenses should be in, so I give you the raw data, but also the percentages versus the budget, just to kind of see how we're trending. So first page here is just a summary of the four funds. Uh, we have the general fund revenue is about eighty six percent of the total for the year. And the expenses are about seventy two percent for the year, so it's a nice spread of about two point four million dollars. That'll get quite a bit closer to each other towards the end of the year, but right now everything is indicating we're gonna have a pretty decent year in the general fund. Highway fund revenue, about eighty nine percent uh received, most of that comes from property taxes. We do still have our CHIPS money from New York State that's outstanding. That's on a reimbursable basis, so once we do the road paving in the summer, we submit the bills to New York State and we're reimbursed usually in the fourth quarter. Uh, expenses in the highway fund look pretty good right now, only about fifty seven percent after three quarters of the year, so uh we're controlling expenses well there. Uh, the refuse fund, we're actually uh already have exceeded budget for revenue in the refuse fund. I think we had a little more compost and mulch sales and a little more activity in the recycling center than we had expected. Expenses for the year, about seventy percent for refuse. Uh, water fund, that's where we're uh a little below sixty four percent of the revenues in and sixty five percent of the expenses are in. Uh, that's not uncommon at this time of year. Uh, because we bill on a lag uh in the water fund, we typically don't see the highest billing cycles until September, October and November. So those have not been reported yet in this uh in these numbers, so little harder to say where we'll do with revenue and expenses, but um they don't look to be too far out of whack.
Is this a good water year or a bad water year in terms of
it was an odd year, so it was very wet, I think, in the very beginning of the spring. And as we got later in the summer, it ended up drying out quite a bit, so um it's kind of indicative that we we haven't seen a lot of money come in yet, and that's probably because uh some of the bigger accounts like golf courses and things like that, we have a couple golf courses that we sell water to. And if we had a kind of a wet early part of the spring uh and summer, that money hasn't been received yet, so we'll see where we are. It's I don't think totally negative, I think it's probably gonna end up being a little a little less than normal on the consumption side.
Well, how did these percentages track um from year to year?
Um.
So at the at this time last year, what was the general fund revenue at approximately thirty six percent of what we expected to be? Are those kind of in line with
Uh, I suppose they are. I mean, we've trended in the fourteen years that I've been comptroller, we've had uh two deficits. One was a result of a legal settlement and the other was coming out of COVID. So we had twelve years of surpluses, so we typically did see revenue about that number at this time of year.
So this is where we generally expected to be at this time.
Yeah, typically, yeah. I I think these numbers look like they're trending where we normally are. We typically
Expecting as well?
either have surpluses or we use probably a little bit less than the um allocated amount of fund balance that we allocated the prior year.
Thanks.
Okay, so just to go into a little bit more detail, um some of the highlighted topics that are exceeding seventy five percent of the budget. Uh, recreation programs right now for nine hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, about eighty seven percent of the revenue. Um, we still have a couple big sources coming in. I know that um basketball registration, I think, hits next week and
It's today.
Today? Okay, so it hit this week. I knew Ike mentioned, so uh one week was basketball and the next week was um were the ski trips. So those are two of the bigger sources of revenue that are yet to come in for the year, so that eighty seven percent is a is a pretty good number. Uh, summer camps, uh five hundred nineteen thousand was the revenue versus a budget of about five hundred thousand. So we uh we exceeded budget there revenue wise.
Just curious, how does how does that happen? Cause the capacity is fixed, right?
It's incredible.
For the summer camp?
Yeah.
Um, I think we were able to add a few more uh pro uh a few more sections, I think, last year.
Oh, okay.
We did end up adding I think towards the very end, and then I can't remember which camp it was, but I think we added a little bit.
I think TOTS.
Was it TOTS?
I think they were Pabell.
Yeah, they were able to take some of the people that were on the waiting list.
I think it was TOTS.
Rob, what the three hundred and twelve percent, that's up from what we expected?
It's up from what we expected, so uh last year at this time, we were hearing noise from the Federal Reserve that um that the interest rates were gonna go down. They were expecting several um decreases and they were expecting at the beginning of the year. So um we budgeted or I budgeted that pretty conservatively because I just wasn't sure what that number was gonna be. I've mentioned in the past, it's very hard to make up a deficit on the revenue side, so if you're expecting some money, we've already accounted for it on the expense side. If that money doesn't come in, it's very hard for me to cut the expense at this point. So if I get to September and I realize, wow, I budgeted too much for interest earnings, it's not coming in, what can I do? What can I do? Not not very much. Uh, can't lay off people, I can't cut services, so we end up with a deficit if that happens, so traditionally, we budgeted pretty conservatively. I bumped that number up, you'll see, we'll do the budget discussions next week. I bumped interest earnings up a little bit from what I had budgeted this year because we didn't quite see the decreases that we had expected. Um
You mean in the rate?
In the rate, yeah.
Well, you know, but it's gonna potentially drop more when I'm reading.
It's going to. We've got some money in the bank, so I'm just trying to uh to to estimate where that's gonna come in, but uh yeah, you jumped ahead just a little bit, but the interest earnings, uh those have been strong throughout the year. And because we do have a healthy fund balance in the bank, that's why we're seeing that. Uh, building permits, still very strong. Um, I think we're just about I think Tom said we're about two thirds of the way through uh Toll Brothers. I think we still have about a third of the permits outstanding, and I know they were gonna try to get most, if not all of them, in before the end of the year.
Is that a a good predictor for the tax cap growth rate going up?
Um, yeah, Josh tells me that we're based on the assessment jump I saw from uh from he's got a tentative role that he issues on or a final role that he issues on September fifteenth. The number was significantly higher than in past years, so hopefully that's gonna give us a little boost in our growth factor for next year.
Right.
Uh, couple sources of revenue that we have not yet received, uh sales tax, so that's typical. At this time of year, we would only have two payments in. But based on where we are at this point, I'm predicting we'll end up about hundred and ten percent of uh of the budgeted, sorry, the budgeted number, uh probably about two point two five more that we're expecting. Uh, second half mortgage tax, this is what had caused me some worry when I received the first half mortgage tax. It was only about three hundred and ninety three thousand. Our budget was nine fifty for the year, so that looked like we were really um not gonna be in a good spot with mortgage tax. Um, but we're able to track that on a monthly basis through the assessor's office. They can tell me um pretty good estimate within you know, a few thousand dollars and uh we're trending towards about seven hundred thousand for that second payment, so does look like we're gonna exceed the revenue budget in uh for the end of the year. And fourth quarter interest, uh the rates are still reasonably high. We have cash in the bank until we pay the county, which is about two weeks, so uh our cash will drop off a little bit after that, but I'm still predicting another two hundred and twenty five thousand to come in um and put us uh four hundred percent over budget, which is a good thing. Going over the expense side, just some of the um noteworthy numbers that are exceeding seventy five percent, three quarters of the budget. Uh, transfers to capital, we did this early in the year, we transferred two hundred and nine thousand dollars. That was basically from fund balance to uh to fund the uh Getney Park retaining wall that was uh completed this year. The bond payments, they're showing that they're eighty eighty nine percent in principal and almost a hundred percent interest, just a small amount left. That's just due to the timing of the payments. There's one more bond payment left and that's in December. We are, we'll be right on budget. That's budgeted to the exact penny. Unfortunately, liability insurance. For the year, we're trending almost a hundred and forty five percent above budget. You know, we talked about that in August when the renewal came in and unfortunately we had one option and uh that's where we are. Uh, camp staff, a little bit over budget, about a hundred and twenty percent of budget. Uh, because we have a little bit higher revenue, we had to bring in a little more staff, so uh that number's a little bit higher than was anticipated. And uh the police
Did that that cancel out the revenue?
Yep.
In totality, it canceled that there?
Yeah. It's not supposed to be one to one like that, but but it does look like it it ended up that way. Uh, and police vehicles, um that was kind of because we had a backlog. They were ordered in um the last couple of years and they finally received them this year, I think you may remember. I think it was the ones that we ordered in maybe twenty three that they weren't able to fulfill in twenty three. They had to fulfill them with twenty four models. And the cost of those were a little bit higher, that's why we're about uh hundred and twelve percent of budget at this point. Twenty twenty four remaining large expenses to come in, uh New York State retirement. I've already received the bill. Uh, it's not due till December. I'm gonna hold on to my cash until then. It's one point seven eight million. Um, that's gonna bring us to a hundred and seven percent of budget. Uh, I did see those numbers and I'll talk a little more on the budget for next year as well. Uh, those numbers are jumped through the roof, so unfortunately, the retirement system with a defined benefit plan, they know how much money they have to pay out. And um if they don't have the cash, responsibility falls back on the municipalities, so in twenty five and twenty six, we're gonna have a pretty pretty big jump. Uh, health insurance, uh still have two payments left. It's gonna bring us to ninety nine percent of the budget, it looks like. Uh, seven hundred and ninety thousand more than we're expecting. And our tax refund at Chappaqua Crossing that was just approved. That's gonna be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think we had one twenty five budgeted for the year. Uh, moving on to the highway fund, uh total revenue is about eighty nine point eight six percent. Interest income is up at uh hundred and seventy three percent. Uh, you'll see that across all the funds. Uh, one thing that's a little lower is snow and ice removal. Uh, we're only at about twenty nine percent of revenue for the year. Um, that's typical at this time. Uh, these are payments we received from New York State and from Westchester County for following state and county roads. Those reimbursements typically don't come in till the fourth quarter, so it's not um it's not unusual that we're this low. And uh I mentioned before, when I did the summary, uh the CHIPS money, we're yet to receive that. Uh, that's also anticipated in the fourth quarter. On the expense side, uh again, most of the bond payments were made already this year, so uh those numbers are a little higher than seventy five percent of the budget. Uh, road paving, we went uh slightly over this year. Uh, we typically do that when we see the CHIPS money, the CHIPS um at the time of the budget, uh we can estimate what the CHIPS money is. Usually, we estimate a little conservatively and we usually come in a little bit over. And Bart is all too happy to uh take any of the excess and put it back into the road paving, so that's why we're usually a little over a hundred percent of budget for road paving. Uh, and the mechanics overtime, uh it's close to a hundred percent. I know early on in the year when um when the snow was falling in the first quarter of the year, I know we had some of the equipment breakdown and uh we had to use a good bit of overtime to have the mechanics come in during the snow piling. Uh, the large expenditures to remain in the highway fund, uh New York State retirement and health insurance, you'll see this across all four of the funds. Uh, moving on to the refuse fund, uh overall revenue I mentioned were a hundred and two percent. Um, that's good spot, compost and mulch, uh almost double what we expected. Means we've taken taken in a lot of uh raw material, which is tree branches, et cetera, and converted to mulch mulch and compost and turned around and sold that. Uh, interest earnings again and uh yard waste, which is the other side of the compost and mulch. We bring in the yard waste and we sell it as compost and mulch. Most of our revenue in this fund has already been received. Uh, remaining forty thousand or so uh will probably be comprised of interest earnings and uh taking in any of the fall yard waste. On the expense side, uh same as all the other funds, the bond payments and the liability insurance. And uh the remaining large expenses, uh we have this the New York State retirement, the San Pro contract, which is trending right about budget, but we do still have two large payments to make and our transfer site fees. Looks like it's trending a little bit below budget, which is good news. And uh finally, the water fund, uh as I mentioned during the summary, the total revenue is about sixty four percent. Uh, this report only captured water consumption through the end of August. Uh, this consumption was built in September, so um our our months of September, October, November are our billing months typically, so um it doesn't look like we're off pace based on that. Uh, some of the accounts that are exceeding uh seventy five percent of the budget, again, interest earnings. And then our consumption, both with uh Mount Pleasant and IBM are trending ahead of budget at this time. Our residential consumption is only about thirty eight percent for the year, and again, that's a function of the uh timing of the bills. Okay, and uh finally, the water fund expenses. Some of the categories exceeding budget, again, the bond payments, liability insurance, uh the standby generator. As you know, the we finally brought the replacement generator back on this year. Took a little bit longer to get running than we thought and we had a few more expenses than we had anticipated, so uh that number's about a hundred seventeen percent of the budget. And the ozone
Generator is one that we temporarily had?
Yeah, right, so that, yeah.
So that should go to zero? So that should go to zero?
Uh, we leave an amount for maintenance every year. I can't remember if it's like ten or fifteen thousand because they do come out and maintain it every year. It's one of the reasons we actually were able to make a claim on it because our main our maintenance records were crystal clear, so they came out and said, well, it wasn't through any fault of ours, it was, you know, an act of God, so um, you know, we did receive an insurance settlement there, so we do have an amount, won't be exactly zero, but uh it it won't be one a hundred and twenty nine thousand either.
Just quickly for a little levity, would that would that be Poseidon since it's a water fund? Come on.
Yeah.
Good try, you're trying.
Go ahead.
You're almost there, almost done.
It's for the New York town firefighters that are watching us tonight.
Go ahead, I'll get in trouble.
It's for your fans.
Uh, the remaining expenses to come in this year, uh cost of raw water to New York City. Unfortunately, their billing is about three months behind, so uh we expect another million plus dollars uh in bills for the cost of raw water. Um, we still have a couple months on the Veolia contract and a couple months of electricity for the water treatment plant yet to pay. And uh, again, like the other funds, health insurance and state retirement. Okay, and this is just kind of a projection. Don't hold me to it. Don't take any pictures or uh publish this to the newspaper. This is where I'm hoping we'll be at the end of the fourth quarter. Uh, we're
It's going in the newsletter, Rob.
Where you see the blue bars uh exceeding the green bars, that means we'll have a surplus for the year. The only one that looks like uh the water fund, uh I'm looking at expenses right now over revenue. Um, and that's okay because we had budgeted six hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, so uh these numbers don't take into account the fund balance. But um and uh also the highway fund, we had budgeted a hundred and twenty five thousand in fund balance, so as long as the difference, uh as long as the expense over revenue is less than the fund balance, uh we consider that a positive for the year. Okay, and last, uh just to show you that I'm paying attention, but I don't expect anybody to read this or go into detail. This is just my tracking of the um of the cash flow and cash on hand. I do track this on a monthly basis and kind of the inflows and the outflows and typically, probably the most cash that we ever have on hand in the town comes uh at the end of January, at the end of September, once we've done the school tax collection. Uh, it's very short-lived because I've gotta pay that money out by the fifth of the following month, so it's all gone already, but um looks real good at the end of September, so. And uh that's what I've got for the third quarter. Any any other questions from anyone?
No, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to anybody?
Your comments are great, thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Sounds very clear, well laid out, thank you.
Yep. Yeah, I think we're in a good spot going uh going into this year. Uh, the budget you'll see was a little little bit tougher for next year.
So much.
Uh, some of these revenue sources are are definitely gonna drop off unfortunately in on the expense side. You know, I mentioned retirement, you'll see that in detail coming through the budget.
Insurance.
Insurance, yeah.
Yeah.
Insurance went up a lot.
Insurance as well, yeah.
It's been really helpful having these quarterly reports, especially going into budget season. We already have a good idea of how how the year is going and then we'll we'll get a better sense of what you're s- uh proposing
Absolutely. It's more digestible this way, I think, too.
for 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 next year, because it's just um
It's too much.
it's a lot of information to only get once a year
I agree.
It is, for sure.
over the budget, so I think it's really well worth the time to take and and I appreciate that.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Just along with the project report that we get from Jill.
I did question about insurance, so I know it's a lot higher, I mean, insurance in general has gotten a bit more expensive, but I know that ours are particularly higher because of a number of claims. Do we have any idea how long that's gonna last before we kind of go back to a baseline?
I think RJ told me it was about five years that they kind of um and I think it's weighted too, so it's not like you know, I think it five years ago was weighted a little bit less than than more recent stuff, so hopefully some of the claims that we had at the beginning of that period kind of drop off. It's been unfortunate, we RJ goes out every year and you know, gets quotes from anybody that he can, and uh last few years, we've only had one company. It's the same company quoting us, so anytime where you don't have any competition, you it's difficult. I will say that, you know, RJ said, even if we had perfect zero claims history, we would have been looking at a twenty percent or more increase this year.
It's insanity.
Just due to the overall market. And you know, you saw a hurricane two weeks ago and another one this week and you know, that there's a trickle down all over uh all over that industry, so unfortunately, that's the case. I have talked to some of my uh comptrollers in different municipalities and and they're seeing similar numbers and frankly, some of the ones I talked to didn't have the claims that we did, so um it might be as bad as we think. Uh, I I did see one. I don't wanna call them out, but they had a higher increase than we did and they weren't really able to put their finger on why. We can definitely point to why.
Okay, yep, it's a different world. Um, thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Sure.
Thanks. Um, so next on our top on our agenda is a topic on draft of the local law, which we are going to table for now. Uh, because our we faster trying to do a little more research
That's correct, you're right.
on the topic, so we will table table the discussion until further notice and uh when you get, you know, we'll
Yep, I'll do some more research and I'll will report back to the board.
we'll get back to us. Okay, thanks. Thank you, we know, appreciate that. Okay, now we're gonna move on to administrative items.
Thank you. Okay, not many for tonight. Uh, we have a street opening bond, uh street street opening permit bond release. Uh, an authorization to purchase water maintenance materials. Uh, authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of uniforms. Uh, we buy uniforms every other year at DPW, so this is uh one of the years we're buying them. And uh Jeremy's favorite, an authorization to accept vehicle auction results.
It must be about three hundred grand.
What's that?
It must be in the neighborhood of three hundred grand or so.
From the beginning, when once we started tracking it? Yeah, I think so. Not this year.
No, 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 no.
Unfortunately, not this year.
Alright, so I that concludes our work session. Um, Jill, I see you up there. Anything that you might wanna add? I think we've covered everything on the agenda. Great, okay. Christina?
Um, yep, we're just gonna, if I could, um, if I could just ask you, we're gonna just, and we have that correction resolution, revised resolution with social media coordinator.
Same or different?
Just handing it to the board, and I think it just um some wording needed to be changed for Westchester County.
Same.
Okay, and this is replacing the current number five?
It's um
There's another one.
Oh, this is a new This is in addition, and we passed one last week, so it's just
In addition, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we were trying to keep it consistent. This was just the social media coordinator was a position we've renewed. This is the second renewal.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And um the way that the prior resolution read, it didn't match um the way it didn't match the uh other renewals, so we just wanted to make sure we're apples to apples.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I have a motion to close the work session and open up the town board meeting?
Selma.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So now we are now officially uh open your town board meeting. Any announcements, Rob?
I don't have anything, Jill. Do you have anything? No.
No, uh, uh, I've got a a few things to mention for my supervisor's report. At this time, I just want to um acknowledge the absolutely um moving and meaningful program we had last night for our October seventh memorial, and I wanna recognize the fantastic people who were involved in organizing and speaking at the program. I wanna thank Ali Rosenberg and Stacy Science, the co-chairs of the Town of Newcastle Holocaust and Human Rights Committee and all the members of that committee. And Ali Kemtov as their liaison, thank you.
Thank you.
And also students of the Horace Greeley Enough Club, their co-chairs are Eva Millerman and Jared Science. They put together such a meaningful program, worked very hard and it was a full house. The Chappaqua Performing Arts Center was packed to capacity and I understand there was a waiting list of almost two hundred people.
It's incredible.
And it it ended up being livestreamed and so many people expressed their appreciation. We are esp- especially thankful to the keynote speaker, Maya Izuchew, who traveled all the way from Israel. She was a is a Nova concert survivor. And she came and bore witness to to her experience on October seventh in Israel. And we really appreciate her and recognize how difficult it was for her to do that, but um but we're incredibly grateful that she came to Newcastle to do this and uh grateful to Alicia Sands also, who shared some personal reflections. Uh, knowing the Hersh Goldberg family. And we had Aiden or Eden Adre, who is the Westchester Youth Representative from Israel, who was there as well. And we had rabbis, cantors, we had reverends and G S U students, um and we heard sermons and beautiful music, and it was just a a really moving evening and I heard from so many people who are very grateful for that program. So, thank you to everybody. And also now I just wanna switch gears and remind everyone of some really important and exciting programs coming up in October. There are a lot of them, so I don't want anyone, I don't want any There are a lot of them, so I don't want anyone, I don't want any of them to fall under the radar. Um the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee is uh launching Get to Know Your Neighbor bench, which will be at the farmer's market starting Saturday, October nineteenth. It will be an op- there'll be an actual bench uh at the um entrance to the market and it'll be an opportunity to sit down, sit down with someone, one of your neighbors and and talk and just get to know one another. Uh it I'm really grateful to them to have thought of this. Um it's uh an opportunity to encourage people to slow down, engage in conversation, share their stories and you know, building a sense of community, one person at a time. The Committee on Inclusion and Belonging had a very similar uh idea and they worked really independently of each other, this is a different program. But it's also about sharing stories and it's called um Story Exchange. And it's an opportunity to get together, um build empathy and make connections. And this is something you have to sign up for, it's in the newsletter, but there's um there's a page on the town website. So I will put it again in the town newsletter, if you're not signed up for the newsletter, please do sign up, it's it's a wonderful opportunity, again, it's about building community. And finally, we have um a wonderful program coming back, which had been started in twenty seventeen by a resident, Evy Rosen, when Rob Greenstein was town supervisor. Evy started um AOK Day, which is make uh which is an Act of Kindness Day, which is going to be on October twenty third, so look out for signs around town. And um we are just informing the community that October twenty third will be Acts of Kindness Day in the Town of Newcastle. So um you know, stay tuned for more information about that. And uh that's about it, does anyone have anything they wanna add from the community? No? Okay, so let's move on, um do we have a town administrators' report?
It can be in the um in the newsletter in the end week.
Okay, very good. All right, then, so now let's move on to public comment and new business, um is there any public comment from the audience? Not at this time, uh anyone online to make public comment?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, okay, well, that takes us to our consent agenda. Rob, do you wanna go over? And then consent agenda and then proposed.
Sure, um
And the options.
You mentioned we had the street opening bond uh permit bond release. Uh authorization to purchase water maintenance materials, authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of uniforms. Um authorization to accept vehicle auction results. And the resolution authorizing the uh assessor to make the corrections to the twenty twenty three final assessment rule.
Okay, and then we have proposed actions. I can go over too.
Okay, we have the um authorization to change status, we're going to move the temporary court clerk, she's going to become the permanent court clerk. And we're gonna have an authorization to hire a part-time court clerk as well. Uh authorization to post and hire a laborer position in recreation and parks. And the authorization to reappoint um I think it's five members to the sustainability board.
Okay, great, so um.
Who wants to get us started?
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Good. Um I move to adopt, I know this one through five is listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.
Okay.
Um I move, I'm sorry. Uh I move to authorize the change in status from temporary part-time to provision probationary full-time for Andrea Cortuccio, who serves in the position of court clerk at the annual salary of sixty six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy cents effective October fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Ally?
Yeah. I move to authorize the hiring of Kathleen Burns to serve as a temporary part-time court clerk at the hourly rate of forty two dollars and ninety four cents per hour effective October seventeenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeremy, go ahead.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department. At the annual salary ranging from fifty one thousand two hundred and forty six dollars, ninety seven cents to seventy thousand three hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy two cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jen, go ahead and finish.
I move to authorize the reappointment of the following individuals to the Sustainable Road Advisory Board for a two-year term effective August first, twenty twenty four through July third, first, twenty twenty six.
Second.
You gonna name them?
I'm sorry.
Hang on there, sorry.
Um Jennifer Flag, Maxine, Marco Rubin, Alicia Malloy, Kathleen Schreiber, Rick Stein.
Now I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can do the last one, did you get number five?
Yes. I move to authorize the extension of the part-time social media coordinator, Matthew Fernandez to the total stipend amount of four thousand six hundred and forty dollars to be paid in the amount of five hundred and eighty dollars for a period of sixteen weeks effective retroactively from September fourteenth, twenty twenty four through January fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Five, okay, one more, they have also tiny, uh nothing?
Oh, the ethical side.
You're right, Jill, I we did.
I asked, they said it was in the consent agenda.
It's on the thirteen, for me, there's a.
Is it in the consent agenda?
It was.
Yeah, hang on a second, number five, let me make.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's number five.
Yep.
Yep, there it is, yep, okay. It didn't say.
So I move to adjourn?
Yep.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are hereby adjourned, thank you.